Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We haven't had the pledge said so well in a while. That's very nice. It's very loud and clear from you guys, so we appreciate that. Please, Scarlett, please note, we have two members absent tonight. What we're gonna do, let me get myself straight here. We have three proclamations to read, and that's hence the crowds here, and it's so wonderful to see y'all. The first one is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month proclamation, followed by one for DeLeon Elementary School, and then Municipal Clerk's Week. What we'll do, we'll start off with the Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month proclamation, which the city attorney will read. And if you guys want a photo, which we can, you can come up here, those of you who want to be in that photo, then I can recess us briefly, and we can go outside and take a picture. That's okay? So with that, we're gonna go ahead and read that proclamation first.
Sure. This is a proclamation signed by Mayor Paul Palosik, and it reads in part, "Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our county, of our country, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety; and whereas it is important to urge all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they deserve. Now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Victoria, Texas, and urge all residents to do their part to increase the safety and awareness in our community." And it is signed by Mayor Paul Palosik.
I'm not gonna guarantee we get everybody, but I think we got most people.
Three, two, one, smile. Three, two, one more. And let her get what she needs. Okay, I think I'm good.
Just a normal Tuesday.
Name and address.
Patricia Hiscardo. My address is 3207 Redwood, Victoria, Texas, 77901. I just wanna thank everybody for showing up. The bikers have always been a big, big part of the community. A lot of people, you know, don't realize how many people we actually help. And again, everybody, we always stand together. We stand as one. We invite everyone, whether we ride with the club or whether we ride as independent riders. I appreciate that everybody came out, and I wanna thank the city for allowing us the proclamation. And please, watch out for bikers. Look twice, save a life. Please.
So we're gonna take a quick recess, and I'm gonna go outside and take a photo with those guys. If anybody else wants to go be in the photo, and I'll be right back. Okay? Acceptable? All right. Okay, thank you for your patience, and we'll re-adjourn, and we'll now read the proclamation for DeLeon Elementary.
This is a proclamation signed by the mayor on this, the 24th day of March 2016. Whereas DeLeon Elementary School bears the name of our city's founding father, and whereas the descendants of Martin DeLeon and the Victoria Hispanic Genealogy Society have made a rich investment of time, talent, and treasure to enhance the learning experience of DeLeon Elementary School students; and whereas DeLeon Elementary School has written, organized, and choreographed a play about the life of Jose Maria de Jesus Carvajal, surveyor of Victoria County; and whereas Texas history is an essential dimension to student learning, now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim March 24th, 2016, as Martin DeLeon Elementary School History Day, and urge all citizens to reaffirm their commitment to our schools by taking time to attend the presentation prepared by the community, school, faculty, and students.
You have comments?
I'm Selena Reyna. I live at 406 Pisano Drive in Victoria, Texas. I am the proud principal of DeLeon Elementary, and this is Mr. Carl Frisch, our assistant principal at DeLeon Elementary. I wanna take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Palosik, members of the city council, Dr. Jacklich, our superintendent of schools, and Ms. Tammy Keeling, our VISD board president. Thank you so much for this opportunity to bring our students to the city council meeting. We appreciate your reception, your kindness, your proclamation that you prepared for us this evening. It is an honor to have our students be part of such an important event in our city. As you witnessed on March 24th, and as you see in the costumes our students are wearing, DeLeon Elementary School takes great pride in celebrating the history of our wonderful city. On March 24th, 2016, we celebrated the life of Senor Carvajal, and this, and his surveying work in Victoria County, and we witnessed the impact that hands-on historical reenactment had on our students. It is amazing to see their hearts and eyes come alive with excitement as they watch their peers in historical regalia using antique surveying equipment and reenacting exactly how our founding father surveyed the land many years ago. We are in debt to the descendants of Martin DeLeon and the Victoria Hispanic Genealogy Society for all their hard work during this celebration. As you can see in this historically accurate close, the ladies worked hard in making our event a tremendous success. I also wanna take this time to thank Mr. Carl Frisch that actually wrote the play. We thank him, thank you. And also Ms. Blanche DeLeon, please stand. She is a descendant. She is a descendant of Martin DeLeon, and she was, I heard she couldn't sew very well, but she did a lot of other things to help. Once again, we thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to the future cooperation between the school district and our school and the outstanding city of Victoria. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I very much enjoyed attending the play. The kids did a great job, and I wish Ms. DeLeon would've wore her costume. She had a very, she looked very appropriate. I was giving her a hard time about that a while ago, but thank you. We're all very proud of VISD, and I can say that. You know, as mayor, we often, I joke, and I think my fellow council members joke about, we don't get paid to do this job, but this pay is enough to see what you guys do, so thank you so much. You're welcome to stay for the meeting or go at your leisure. Do you want any further pictures? I just wanted to warn you, it may get tedious. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's okay. That's the biggest crowd we've had in a long time.
That's an incredible crowd, yeah. Young people are impressive.
Way to clear out a room.
Do you know those Colby Sun towns? Right there, the little dark-headed kid that I think shook your hand.
I see some resemblance. I've met him before. Okay, thank you very much for that. We gave those folks time to file out. We have one more proclamation which we can read now. Last but not least.
This is a proclamation honoring Municipal Clerk's Week, and it is also signed by Mayor Paul Palosik, and it reads in part, "Whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between its citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2016, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent."
And that department does a wonderful job. They're always the first faces we see when we walk in City Hall, so they know if we're grouchy or happy or whatever. Thank you for the work you do. You do interact with the public a great deal, which is important, so. Okay, that concludes, well, no, we're still on items from council. Counsel, do y'all have anything in particular you wanna bring up? I have one. Go ahead, Mr. Jalapaska.
I'd like to see about getting a report on the Zika virus. We do mosquito spraying. Perhaps it might be advisable to start earlier.
I think, Colby, where'd you go? I think, have we started this week, or?
Yes, ma'am. We sprayed this morning. We'll spray tomorrow morning and Thursday morning, pending weather. If we don't have any rain or anything to that nature, we'll finish Thursday morning.
And you have to, you can't spray when it's too windy, et cetera?
Right, it's ineffective if it's too windy, but we'll be out before dawn. But the main thing is the water. If it rains, then it just wastes the chemical to do it, and so we'll, if it does happen to rain, we'll skip and go, after that rain dries, then we'll be able to go out and spray.
It's also a good time to remind everybody to empty any standing water they have in their yards.
Yeah, the best thing is getting, you know, the homeowner taken care of, making sure your yard is mowed short, making sure there's no standing water. Those types of things help out more than, more than anything, so.
I have two items, actually, and that was one of them, is mosquito spraying. The other is, I wanted to ask the attorney for a food truck ordinance update. I know there's been a lot of work done.
Yes, sir. The committee of food truck owners met with Councilman Jalapaska and Councilmember Scott and myself several weeks ago to go over their concerns with the previous draft of the food truck ordinance. I made some revisions to that document and circulated it back through that organization. They have now approved the changes, and once Ms. Scott returns, we will sit down, I'll sit down with Mr. Jalapaska and Ms. Scott, make sure that they're comfortable with the changes as well, and then we will bring it back to council for consideration.
Okay, so in a month or two, or, so, okay.
As soon as that happens.
Very good. The process went well, I assume, so, looking forward to it.
It went very well. I thought it was a very cordial meeting.
Good. That's good to hear.
They understood that much of the ordinance is just encompassing other things that are already on the books. You know, the health codes and so on.
Well, very good. Anything else from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into citizens' communication, so anyone that would like to come forward and speak about any item at all, we do ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. This is the time for anyone to come up to the podium. Just give us your name and address, and try to keep your, you can come forward. Thank you.
I'm Victor McDonald. I live at 901 North de Vera, Victoria, here. Kinda close to North Street, so y'all kinda know where it's at. I have contacted the city attorney. I've contacted the planning commission. Okay, I left them a letter, and a transit company. Let me go over what kind of problem I have. In reference to, it's in reference to the Victoria Transit Bus Stop located on the right-of-way at 901 North de Vera, which has been my residence and homestead for over 15 years. You know, here in Victoria, we don't have any zoning, but we do have city ordinances to follow if a business is adjacent to a residence. And, you know, if a business is there, they have to have enough parking, they have to have an eight-foot screening fence, they need restrooms, and there's a whole bunch more if there's a business adjacent to a residence. Operating a business in front of my home seems to be grossly altering the intent of a right-of-way. That's the little bitty place that's like 12-foot, I think, in front of my property, and then my property comes in. This bus stop has invaded my privacy, safety, peace of mind. The best bus passengers block my driveway. They're damaging my parking lot, encroaching and trespassing on my property. They're also urinating, broken bottles, loud music, foul language, knocking on my door, wanting to know what time the bus is gonna be there, or if they could have some money, or maybe even a ride, because they don't even, like, the bus sign that's there right now, it don't say when it's gonna stop. And so they sit there and wait and wait, and then they come knock on my door, they see me out in the yard. Everything was pretty good until they took, and I had, took a coffee break, and went in the house, and took my shoes off, and I come back out, and my shoes is gone. That's pretty bad, when it's that bad. You know, I've been there for over eight years, and I'm tired of this annoying nuisance. I've had enough. I purchased a large 24-foot cargo trailer, which y'all probably all seen there. It's some motorcycle sign on the side, and that kinda keeps everything out of view. Because I guarantee you, if, if, that also stops them from pulling in on my parking lot. Right now, I got two cargo trailers there, blocking it most of the time, but I'm not having near the problem now that I had since I put this trailer there, but I'm tired of that trailer being over on the side of my house, you know? I'd like to get rid of it. 'Cause if they can see what's there, it'll be gone. It don't take long, and it'll disappear. I just can't understand why the city of Victoria would authorize somebody to put a bus stop in front of my home when across the street, they own a half a block, right across the street. The city owns it. They mow it all the time, you know? Down the street where the doctor has a parking lot, you know, it's a concrete parking lot. It ain't gonna get hurt, you know, driving on there. Like, when people come to bring somebody to the bus stop, they have to have somewhere to stop, you know? And so they drive on my blacktop, and then when they turn those wheels, it just tears up my blacktop. And I tell you something else, you know, you say, they're gonna say, well, there's nobody catches that bus there. That's because in the last few months, I've run them off. I don't want them on my property. They can get over there on their little place over there and stay. I don't need them laying down on the ground without shirts on. And, you know, I mean, do you want a bus stop in front of your home? That's all I have to say. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. McDonald, have you talked to the transit system yet?
Sir?
Have you talked to the transit system people yet?
I'm gonna tell you, I called our city attorney. I don't know, it's been several months back. I didn't get a hold of him. He didn't return the call. I took a letter there just the other day, and I took one to the transit company and to the planning commission. Nobody calls you back.
Okay, so yet, the answer is yes.
This is the only alternative I have, and I don't know what other alternative I have.
We'll be in touch with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Brandon contacted me last week, and we're working on looking at a different location for that bus stop.
And he's the chairman of?
The Golden Crescent.
Which runs the transit?
The transit system, yes.
So you are looking at, let me repeat, just to make sure, you're looking at another location for that? We'll contact you after the photo. Please keep it brief. We have other speakers, so, I don't mean to be rude.
Because they moved the sign. Somebody moved the sign about, oh, maybe a month ago. And, and I figured it was either the bus people, because they move them around, that's what they told me. But, but it could've been the state, too, because it was blocking the highway sign, you know, how far it is to Port LeVaca. I don't even know what the sign says. But that's, that's another reason. You know, I thought it was gone. Now it's back, you know, not with a real sign, with a wheel, you know, with a pipe sticking out, and it has no time, but it has bus stop.
Okay, we will definitely be in touch with you the next few days. Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open for anyone else that'd like to come forward. Don't forget, name and address for the record.
I'm Bonnie Fortenberry, 603 New Haven. Have any of you council members been out through those streets since, well, Williamsburg is awful. I don't know who's supervising that contractor, but if you drive down it, it's washboarding already. If you haven't come through there, I'm disappointed in all of you. Because someone's not doing their job. Now, granted, I know you all are busy and you have your own businesses to run. I've been there and done that also. But, you know, these streets are awful. We're wasting our, you're wasting our money. And I know you say that this is a repair. I'm well aware of that. But if it's a repair, why is it washboarding already on that street? On all, on all the streets. New Haven down towards, you know, out towards the outside of it is washboarding already, also. Like I said, I don't know who's supervising these contractors, but obviously, we've got a problem with the contractor, or maybe this is what all he was supposed to do. I don't know. I was in the, under the impression that it was supposed to be at least better than what we had, which it is a little. This is Motorcycle Safety Week, or Month, guys. You know, it, we ride a motorcycle, too. The roads haven't been swept, and I know they're trying to wait till it, till the rest of them get done, but there's loose rock everywhere, not only for the motorcycles, but for the two-wheel bicycles for the kids that ride on those streets. It's a subdivision, and it's a quiet subdivision, especially back towards my house. We're back towards the cul-de-sac, so there's not as much traffic back through there. We've, something needs to be done. You've got four more subdivisions on the books to be done. Saddle Brook is one of them. I would hope that they would know what seal coat was before you got started on their roads, because that's not what I thought we were getting. And seal coat, to me, did not mean that, so we need to educate your constituents, your subdivision people, because we don't know what seal coat means. Honestly, I thought seal coat meant that we were getting a hardtop. I've said that before. And I know Mr. Gill came out last, after the city council meeting last time, and he really, he knows that there's lots of loose rock out there. And he says it's going to get swept up, which it probably will eventually, but how soon's eventually? They can't work on it when it's wet, and, I mean, they're out there working right now in Baltimore. It's a short street coming in off of Stockbauer, and we can't get through there right now, which is no big deal. I mean, it will get fixed to some degree. But Williamsburg coming in off of Stockbauer and on down, it's like a washboard. So if you guys would come out and at least try, or at least somebody contact me so that I know that you all care. Because at this point, I'm not real sure about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open?
What information, Mayor? What's the name of that subdivision?
Meadow Creek.
Meadow Creek?
Meadow Creek.
Meadow Creek.
Right across from East.
Again, name and address for the record, please, and then just try to limit, five minutes.
Well, I'm hoping, since there's two of us, I've got a little more time.
Five minutes.
I've got a lot to say. Ernie Byrd, 563 Timber, just right outside the city limits, but also have a business in the city limits. For years, I've been trying to tell the inspections department that they need to take, make some kind of test or something for contractors to take, either be insured, bonded, or something. When somebody gets a contractor's license, all they need is $200. They don't have to have a, any insurance, a bond, anything. And these customers think, when somebody shows them their certificate, they think that's a pretty big deal. And, you know, that they're probably insured and everything. But my dog right here, I mean, he can't drive a nail, he can't read a tape measure, he can't talk. He's the best thing that's ever been around me, but he's got a city contractor's license now. He's one of the newest contractors in Victoria. He's already pulled a job, already done a job. His name's been in the newspaper. That's how easy it is to get a contractor's license here in Victoria. It's a joke down there at the inspections department. Rick Madrid is a joke. All of them down there, except the girls up front, they do a great job. I'm really tired of y'all. Ms. Garrett, I came to you over a year ago about some trees hanging down. They're still hanging down, over a year ago. You asked me if I were mad, was mad at the people that own the trees, and no. I'm worried somebody's going to hit one of these limbs, and it's going to go through somebody's window and kill a little kid, but y'all aren't concerned about it at all. You've known about it for over a year, and you don't do nothing. And boy, you get paid $200,000 a year, or whatever. This whole mess is a joke. When, when I went to the city secretary's office, which they do a great job, thank you very much, ma'am, I wanted to see how much money us taxpayers spent paving that parking lot for the restaurant in the park. Well, you've got to get permission now from the city attorney. He's got to approve them giving out that information, which I understand. But Thomas did everything. He was the secretary. He looked over everything and filled out all the paperwork himself, instead of letting some secretary do it, just to make sure that it didn't get too big, I guess, a deal. I mean, why wouldn't you just approve it and let a secretary do it like usual, instead of you, I mean, we pay you a lot of money to do secretaries' work? And I just don't understand this. I mean, it's, it's crazy. It takes forever for Rick Madrid and them to approve any building I sell, to try to put it in, in a subdivision, an old, old subdivision, and it'll make the best-looking building in the whole subdivision. The last one took six months for them to approve. Before that, it's taken two or three months. They'll say, oh, that building's not as good because the wiring's in conduit. That's not as good as residential. It's a whole lot better than residential. And the inspectors and stuff don't know it. My dog knows more than a lot of them. I mean, it's really a joke. And, ma'am, why haven't those limbs been cut? You knew about it. There's some on John Stock, there's some on the city's property. And y'all passed an ordinance that they all had to be 14-foot or higher. I remember when y'all passed that ordinance, and this is on main roads. This isn't on side streets. This is on Business 59, on Ben Jordan, where the sewage plant is, the city sewage plant, on John Stockbauer, they're all over town. Plus, there's wires hanging down all over town, and y'all blame it on these trucks when they hit them. And y'all don't enforce the laws. Communication lines are supposed to be 18-foot. Electrical lines are supposed to be 22-foot all over. Before we move a building, if it's over 14-foot tall, we have to get permission from Southern Link, from AT&amp;T, from CP&amp;L, everybody. And it, it's a three-day process, getting permission for them to go a certain route, to make sure that their lines are high enough when they're already supposed to be so high. And y'all don't enforce anything. The enforcement office is a joke. They sit around all the time, they'll see them out in the parking lot smoking cigarettes and stuff, and then they're closed half the time when I go up there. And, I don't know. I know some of y'all don't get paid. I know that. But some of you get paid way too much. Boy, the swimming pool deal. You know, y'all spent $50,000. Yeah, I'm going to be through in just a minute. Let's see you looking at that. Y'all spend $50,000 getting somebody to tell y'all what to do, instead of spending that $50,000 to fix the pool, and instead of paying those kids that, the lifeguards, 12 bucks an hour, paying them $7.50 an hour or something to babysit kids out in the hot sun all day, you make more money by nine o'clock in the morning, ma'am, than they did all year long, I mean, all day long out in that hot sun. And we need stuff like that for those kids on that part of town to go to and cool off during the summer. And then y'all close one of the best things down we had in Victoria, that swimming pool. And it could have been fixed for $50,000. I'll guarantee you, it could have been sealed off for $50,000. So I guess that's all I got to say, but I think we need some smarter people up here, because y'all are just like the county commissioners. You think you have to hire people to tell y'all what to do, everything, and I know what it's for, so you can say, well, we didn't make that decision, these people we hired did. So, and they already know what y'all want them to do. So, I'm through.
Citizens' communication is still open for anyone that would like to address us. Just name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments five minutes or less. Seeing no one jump up, we'll go ahead and close citizens' communication, and we do have two ordinances.
The first, C1, is an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Victoria City Code relating to flood damage prevention regulations to add a Division III flood damage prevention supplement, Sections 5-50 through 5-52, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Make a motion to approve item C1. Second?
Motion second. This is second, third reading, so I know we've discussed it several times. Are there any questions or anything? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, that passes. The next one does have a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and read it, and I'll do that.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending the 2015-2016 City of Victoria Water Waste Water Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $570,225 for the Aquifer Storage and Recovery Demonstration Project, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, let's, let's open the public hearing briefly. If anyone would like to speak strictly to item C2 at this point, now would be the time to come forward. Okay, seeing no one come forward to speak on that public hearing item, I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve item C2.
Second.
Motion second. Are there any questions, anything? Yes, sir.
One question, Mayor. Could, how much is this? What's the reimbursement amount from the Texas Water Development Board, just to be clear on that?
$285.
I see that, but just for, for the public to know that some of this is reimbursable.
Yes, sir. They're going to reimburse one-half of the total project, which comes out to the $285,112.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for asking that question. That's a good point. Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Andrew. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign? Okay, that passes. So consent agenda just has two items on it.
They're, they'll be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 19, 2016, and, second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for the use of temporary labor, labor for various city departments in an estimated total amount of $250,000, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E1 and 2? Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, consent agenda items are passed. We have three resolutions.
The first is a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a tax abatement agreement with Stimson &amp; Sons Incorporated doing business as Ashley Home Store, Victoria, Texas, and BPEC Enterprises LLC doing business as Ashley Home Store, Corpus Christi, Texas, authorizing the execution of the agreement by the city manager and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E1? Second.
Motion and second. Are there any questions about this? I think they had their ground open, groundbreaking this afternoon, so I wasn't able to go, but I believe they are.
Wasn't it delayed?
I could be wrong.
Just a moment, I'm sorry. Can I take away my second? I'm providing a bid for that project, and it's probably not appropriate to bid on it.
Okay.
To vote on this, I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
You made the motion.
Motion.
You're going to second it? Okay. Are you able to vote?
You're accusing yourself? I shouldn't, I don't think.
Okay. So that leaves four of us, assuming, do we all four have to vote yes to?
No. The, the way the rules read is that if there is a, less than a total number voting, it's based on the number who are voting. It needs to be a majority of those who are voting, so we would need three affirmative votes in order for it to pass.
Okay. Okay. Just making sure.
Mayor, could I make a couple points? It's a, this tax abatement is for a $2.5 million project improvement, and it's going to create an additional 25 new jobs to our community.
Eight years, and 90 percent the first year, and then it's a declining...
It is on a declining scale.
Right, right. 25 jobs to start, and they have to have 20 minimum to keep them. I don't know how long, but, yeah.
It's done on a yearly basis?
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Look forward to getting started. Anything else? If not, would you have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Fifth Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Victoria and Victoria County for the provision of fire, rescue, health, animal control, and library services, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Make a motion to approve item E2.
I'll second it, but I sure would like a little further explanation.
Okay, yeah.
What are we doing here, Tom?
Sure. A little confusing. We have motion and second, so go ahead.
We do have a motion and a second.
Clarify further.
I was requested to put this on the agenda by Dr. Lisa Campbell, who was at that time the director of the Health Authority. And there are two changes that are being made. They both reflect current practices. You'll remember that when Dr. Campbell was hired to be the director, they made a split in their practice, so that the director was no longer a medical doctor. They had a health authority who was a medical, medical doctor. So that's the first of the two changes that's, that's reflected here. And the second change is a clarification that the Health Department Board of Health provides guidance to the Health Department rather than governing. They don't, the Board of Health is merely an advisory body. So those are the only two changes in this amendment.
When does the new director come on?
He's here.
Is, is he okay with this? I mean, this is, this is a past person's recommendation, but yet we have new leadership over there, and I, like them, they're a blessing before we sign something.
I don't have an answer to that question. I'm sorry.
Without the change, I mean...
It seems incredibly disrespectful.
You know, that's, he's in that role of that administrator, so...
Disrespectful by?
Well, I mean, all of a sudden, the person that brought this up is now gone. There's new leadership there, but we're going to take something under, somebody else's recommendations, but yet there's a different leadership. What if he didn't agree with it, or, I mean, he...
Yeah, yeah.
Perfectly, but I don't know. I, I just...
We could reverse this if he so chooses, that new director. Do you, and I'm asking for your...
Putting a point out there.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, it's a, for guidance here, we just don't know what he thinks.
Sure.
Yeah.
Without the split of duties, he doesn't have a job, because he's taking on the day-to-day operations.
Uh-oh.
But you've still got the, you've still got the position that's the health authority, and I believe that's still Dr. McNeil, so...
Yeah, that makes sense.
But, so...
So you got his job in your hand here now?
Yeah.
That's not funny.
And it, it goes back to the practices.
That's right. We should go forward.
But Ms. Campbell, was the first time we didn't have a physician in that position.
Well, that's when they split it. That's correct.
A medical doctor, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's right. I'm starting to remember now the logistics here.
So they hired somebody before the rules were changed? Before we adopted a rule change?
Well, the county would have adopted this already. We may not.
Both times.